Good evening and welcome from Tom Smith Auditorium on the campus of Catawba College. And welcome to tonight's candidate forum. I'm Michael Bitzer, I'll be moderating tonight's forum. And the forum is being sponsored by WSAT Memories 1280, The Salisbury Post, The Rowan County Chamber of Commerce, and Catawba College. We are pleased to have with us this evening our broadcast partner, Access 16 here in Rowan County, who is taking and will be rebroadcasting our forum. We also have the forum being livestreamed on the web and broadcast into our lobby area, courtesy of Rowan Works and The Salisbury Post. We appreciate their willingness to join us this evening. We also want to express our appreciation to AT&amp;T for the reception before the forum. Tonight's forum will feature the candidates seeking three seats to the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. After the conclusion of this forum in about an hour, we will hear two-minute remarks from the candidates who are seeking office to the positions of Rowan County Sheriff, Register of Deeds, and the Clerk of Superior Court. The format for tonight's forum for the county commissioners is a presentation of a series of questions, with both candidates, with all candidates having two minutes to respond to each question. Each candidate can keep track of their time with a clock positioned in front of us, and at the two-minute mark, I will ask for time. The candidates have agreed to these conditions. We are also very pleased to have an audience with us tonight, both on the air and in person. I've asked them, and they have also graciously agreed, to the condition that they remain silent for the remainder of the debate, except for right now, when I ask them to join me as we welcome our candidates. Our questions for the candidates come from the readers of The Salisbury Post. No one has seen the questions that were selected for tonight, other than myself. Questions will be rotated among the candidates, and at the end, we will have closing remarks by each candidate. We will begin tonight's forum with a two-minute introduction from each of our candidates, going in alphabetical order of the candidates. We will start with Ms. Bell.
Good evening. My name is Lita Bell, and I am a candidate for the Rowan County Commission. I want to work for you, the citizens of Rowan County. Tonight, I want to start by saying thank you to The Salisbury Post, Catawba College, WSAT, and the Rowan County Chamber of Commerce. You are looking at the finalists for this position. You, the citizens of this community, will elect three Rowan County Commissioners. You will elect a majority. You will decide the course of this community. We have been derailed for the past ten years. The train ran off the tracks. But I'm not a cop about the past. The past is the past, and it's just that. What we need to now do is to focus on tomorrow, and how we're going to get the train back on the track to move this far. This is something that you, the voter, will decide. So whoever your choice is, whether it's me or whoever, you make sure that you choose three individuals who are servants for the people, and not individuals to be served. Make sure that you listen to the words from the heart, and not just the words from the mouth. Make sure that the word that candidate speaks matches what that person has put into action. We have a lot to do in this community, and with two words, cooperation and communication, our community can again move forward. So, the choice is yours. The power is in your hand. I ask that you listen tonight, and I thank you for being here tonight. So make a choice, and make it wisely. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Cohen, a lifelong resident of Rowan County. I've owned and operated Cohen Roofing and Metal, a Salisbury business, allegedly since 1926, for the past twenty-five years. The business is ceasing operations at year-end, so I have available times to lead this county in a new direction. I filed as an unaffiliated candidate, but I do not hide from my sensible conservative values. My reason for suggesting myself to be abuse of a county commissioner is that I think I can improve the quality of life in this great county. Born and raised in Rowan County on the western fringe of Salisbury, I remember when this county and its municipalities showed signs of growth and prosperity. Our county seat Salisbury was once the hub of life between Charlotte, Winston-Salem, and Greensboro. Our rural farms, outlying municipalities, and small businesses showed signs of growth. How did things change so drastically in the last twenty-five years? Simply put, bad decisions, poor leaders of all elected bodies, underperforming schools, a highly restrictive zoning requirements, and unfriendly business climate. From promise to the hole in the doughnut in three decades. In November, three new commissioners and several new school board members will likely be elected. The task ahead will not be easy for our new leaders. We need three new commissioners who can individually discuss ideas, debate those issues, and deliver decisions that are fair and productive for the taxpayers of this county. I encourage our audience at home and here tonight to study our candidates individually and not as a team. I am not a politician, nor a great public speaker, but I am a problem solver, and I'm ready to work for this county. Thank you.
This is going to be kind of difficult, but if you have any questions about what I say, send me after the meeting. Good evening, I am Raymond Coltrane. I want to thank Catawba College, Chamber of Commerce, and The Salisbury Post for sponsoring our forum tonight. Also, I want to thank WSAT for broadcasting our forum to those who cannot be with us. An elected official should work to help a government that is effective and efficient, and practices respect for differing opinions. We all, especially those in elected positions in the county and our municipalities, should work together to enhance our educational programs and attract industries and businesses. These efforts will help create jobs and provide goods and services that can improve the quality of life for our citizens. For those on the Board of Commissioners in 2009, 2012, it was rewarding to work with existing and new companies that wanted to expand their operations in Rowan County. Graduating incentive packages helped them to decide to expand their operations here. This resulted in the county receiving more revenue, and the people having access to more jobs. Based on our experiences, this approach will continue to help us attract new businesses and industry. As your Commissioner, I will use my more than forty years in the performance of leadership and decision-making roles in professional and civic organizations. In these roles, I was required to make difficult decisions and balance the needs and interests of individuals and groups from all walks of life. My only reason for asking you to select me as a county commissioner is to have the opportunity to make positive contributions to your life. I will work to make informed decisions that will help have an open, informative government, highest-quality educational workforce program that we can possibly have, practice sound and effective budgeting, and our progressive resource management programs. Rowan County has a lot of potential, and by working towards these goals, I hope to help you achieve them.
Thank you.
In 2011, a Canadian reporter interviewed me for a story she was doing on our local economy. She said they had researched how counties were faring during the recession, and while Rowan County certainly wasn't the poorest, they found that we had fallen the furthest, the fastest, of any community in the nation. A recent Charlotte Observer article showed that every county in our region is growing except for Rowan County. We are the exception, 0.0 growth. In 2000, our poverty rate was 9%. By 2010, it was 20%. And two years later, in 2012, it declined to a staggering 28.4%, fifth worst in the nation. Our county's best teachers, sheriff deputies, other employees are moving to surrounding counties for higher pay, and our kids graduate from college and move elsewhere for jobs. Our kids, our investments benefiting other communities.
May I get by you?
Just to our south, Cabarrus County, has an annual budget of $100 million, larger than ours. I know we're not Cabarrus County, but they're not $100 million better than we are. Our response, we can't seem to get past the petty issues that continue to divide us and rob us of our valuable time and energy. We must do better. Let's focus on the real issues that can make us better: schools, jobs, and our economy. Improving our schools is priority one, and is critical for our economic development. Let's refocus our industry recruiting efforts by exploiting what we do best and becoming relentless at it. Let's coordinate our recruiting efforts with our school and college course offerings to make our workforce development the envy of the entire region. Let's scrutinize every local regulation to make sure they are necessary and cost-effective, then let's build productive, respectful relationships between boards. We need a plan. After all, if we want to be a better economy, we have to be a better community. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here tonight. You are here for the same reason that I'm running for the Rowan County Commission. You love Rowan County, and you want to see a positive change this November. When I say I'm a local boy, I mean I'm local. I'm a graduate of West Rowan High School. I have a BA degree from Catawba College. They'll probably take it away after tonight. I'm a veteran, having served ten years with the 991st Transportation Unit, which is local. I taught school for a while at Landis Elementary, and for the last thirty-seven years, I've operated a local insurance agency. I've been married to my wife Karen for twenty-seven years. I have three children and seven grandchildren. All local, all in a public school. By my calculation, I'm going to be involved with the Salisbury Rowan Salisbury Schools until the year 2031. I've been a PTA resident, Little League coach, president of the Salisbury Sympathie Club, served gallons of spaghetti, worked in numerous jobs with my church, United Way, and others. For the last four years, I've served with the Global Economic Development Commission. I've been the treasurer because I wanted to find out how the money was being spent, and everything passed muster. But I believe that this service has allowed me to see how best I could serve all the citizens of Rowan County, as one of their commissioners. Creating an atmosphere for the support of new business would be my first and most important job. Good-paying jobs and companies adding to our taxpayers would help the entire community. One new manufacturing job would support six to seven additional service jobs.
I come before you tonight because, as I have watched and talked with the people of this county, they are ready for change. And the biggest change that they want, I have found in my humble opinion, is that they want elected leaders who listen to them, who will not come with an already-made-up mind, that they would seek them out and talk with them about the things that they experience. I love this county, and, like I said, it's been a joy to get around and meet people and see all the different areas of Rowan. We have got a tremendous amount of resources. But until we listen and build relationships, there need to have us cooperate and coordinate and communicate. These are the things that I believe, as an experienced leader, that I would bring to the table. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but we can plan ahead. And when we plan ahead and we work towards educational excellence and new jobs coming in because businesses like what they see in our community, then those jobs will bring well-paying jobs to our community, which will help deal with our poverty level. I ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
First of all, thanks to the sponsors in Catawba College. My name is Rick Locklear, I'm running for county commissioner. I come from the southern part of the county. I live there with my wife, Charlene, who's an adult probation officer. I have two daughters. My oldest one is a senior at UNC Chapel Hill, and my younger daughter is a senior at South Rowan. Those things are important because this is my family, this is my home. With a name like Locklear, you know I came from the eastern part of the state. I had the great opportunity to come and play football at Catawba College, the greatest experience of my life. I've been practicing law now in southern Rowan County for twenty-seven years, thirty years overall. I have clients who come into my office day in, day out. I listen to their problems, and that's one of the important things that I believe that I will bring to the board, is not only do I talk, but I can listen. And most importantly, I can listen and understand the problems that people are facing. For the last ten years, I've seen and heard many of the same problems over and over again. Families are suffering in many different ways, and a lot of the problems that we're experiencing are as a result of the lack of employment opportunities in our community. You've heard it from every candidate. Every candidate knows and understands what is the problem. You've got excellent choices to make. I hope that I'll be one of your choices. Thank you.
I'm Gene Miller, and I want to thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, The Salisbury Post, Catawba College, WSAT, and Dr. Bitzer for sponsoring this forum. I also want to thank the over fifty-one hundred registered voters of Rowan County that supported my efforts to become an unaffiliated candidate for Commissioner. As a public servant and a native of Rockwell, I'm excited for the opportunity to continue to serve this great county. You see, after twenty-nine years in public schools and fifteen years in the banking industry, I have retired. However, there is still a lot of work to do, and I believe that I have the experience and the drive to make good things happen here in Rowan County. As Assistant Superintendent of Rowan Salisbury Schools, I have been responsible for many multimillion-dollar budgets. I've been responsible for the construction of twenty-two new North Carolina schools, and numerous major public facility upgrades and renovation projects totaling more than $750 million. I am proud to call Rowan County home, and my top priority is to help our local economy by making this an attractive place to live and do business. Any business seeking a North Carolina location wants a stable, educated workforce, and a quality of life that makes it easier to attract new employees to come to work. Existing businesses have exactly the same needs, and they depend on our county leaders to create the kind of business environment which will allow them to succeed. With this kind of growth comes higher employment, higher salaries, and more jobs in every sector, from construction to retail and more. If elected, this will be my number-one priority. Secondly, I'm running because my background in public education has taught me that we can never stop learning and improving. Rowan County has undergone massive change over the past several years, and you all deserve public servants who look to the future of the county, who embrace a mentality that encourages growth in business, and who are willing to look past differences for the betterment of all Rowan County families. Thank you so much for your time and attention. Please vote November the 4th for Gene Miller. To find out more about my candidacy, go to votegene Miller dot com.
Thank you. Our first question, we will be dividing the group into two groups of four, and we will start with Ms. Klusman and the four candidates on that side. This question comes from a reader of The Salisbury Post. "The purchase of the Salisbury Mall, known now as the West End Plaza, has been a controversial and confrontational subject. Please share your thoughts on the mall and how we should utilize the location to the county's advantage." Ms. Klusman.
Well, when our county commission bought the mall, I was very opposed to it. But right now, we own it, and we have to figure out what we're going to do. There is no master plan yet, and when you buy a property of that size, I truly believe that you need to have a plan before you start buying a lot of square feet of a building. I think that what we need to do, number one, as a commission, is to do our due diligence. It's my understanding that before we paid, we as taxpayers, paid for the mall, that the previous owner did not allow our folks inside the mall to inspect it. Now that's what I understand, and if that's not correct, please let me know afterwards. But I've been talking with people all over our county about what should we do? And there's been some good ideas. I talked with our economic development person, Robert Gill, about a call center possibility. I have another friend that would like to see, through grants and local organizations, working together to have a place for our children to go and learn, to learn about North Carolina nature, to perhaps have some fun things for them to do. I know one thing in this town is our kids really, really want a skateboard park, and it's very good exercise. But the land that the building sits on is very valuable.
Thank you. Mr. Locklear.
First of all, in regards to the mall purchase, I was opposed to it primarily because of the way it was purchased. It was purchased from funds from the reserve account of the county. The problem with that is that's our savings account. When our revenues fall short on the tax receipts, that's where we go and get our money, so we make up the difference. That was my first objection. Secondly, we did not go through the local government commission in order to purchase that mall. What's the problem there? Well, the local government commission, they're the ones who conduct the oversight. They make certain that before we get into long-term debt, our county commissioners and others do their due diligence. You've heard that phrase. One of the things, if you're a commercial lender, you're going to do is you're going to ask the question, "How is this property zoned?" As we all know, and we read in the last week or two, we understand that that wasn't done. The one thing we've got to do is understand that there are procedures, safeguards in place, and we've got to follow those. Now, I've heard talk about a needs assessment. Now, I know and understand that when you go to a department head and ask him if he needs more space, he's going to say, "Yes." Do you need more employees? "Yes." Do you need more money to run your program? "Yes." That's putting it in reverse order. I believe that at some point, yes, we do need to conduct a capital improvements plan. If departments are determined to have needs for space, then you look at that as your first alternative, if the county continues to own it. I would like to see, if once elected, that we form a committee that will begin to search out different ideas, creative ideas, from the community. Salisbury has a wealth of talent here. We need to incorporate those individuals in giving us fresh, new ideas, and don't just look to elected officials, politicians, for all the answers. Incorporate the talent that's here, and the business people in the community who have been successful in businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. My first thought on this is what a shame that we have come to the point where we've got one of the really nice assets that we had in Rowan County, the mall, which a lot of you have been to and shopped at, and so have I and others. And it's really a shame that it's now become a burden on the taxpayers of Rowan County, and I'm really saddened by that. Couple of thoughts here is that, first of all, it should never have been purchased without some kind of a plan, a facility plan, or an operating plan, or what are you going to do with it? That was never discussed. At the very least, we paid way too much money for it. I think we bid against ourselves, and that's pretty well been just struggling. There was and still no demonstrated plan on what you're going to do with 320,000 square feet. Now, if you need 300,000 square feet, that's great, but if you don't need it, then why would you buy something like that? I'd like to be driving around a Bentley, too, but I don't need a Bentley, and I can't afford a Bentley, and have no intention to buy one. There is no financial plan on the use of it right now. What is it actually costing us? What's the repairs going to be? What's the operating going to be, et cetera? So it's just been a folly from the very beginning. And I will say very quickly upfront that government should not own retail establishments. Government should be supporting retail, not be in competition with retail. Now, what are we going to do with it? We have it. You're going to elect three new members of the Board of Commissioners. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I will just be one person, I'll be 20% of that board, but I am open to suggestions. I've heard lots of suggestions on what we can do with it. I think there is a solution out there, and I'm excited about the possibility of being on a team that can decide what to do with it. I've heard things from sports, a sports complex, to a Knox Mill School, et cetera. There is a solution out there, and I will work hard to find what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen.
We own the mall, and what we need to do now is to make plans for what we're going to do with it. There are options available. We can sell the mall. We can tear it down. We can create sports complex and other ideas that have come up. We can tear it down and build, put, a good idea I heard was put Knox Mill School out there, the AU Knox Mill School. Land is very valuable. Land is probably more valuable by itself than it is with the structure it's on. But I'm not a real estate expert. What we need to do is to make plans, get experts in, and give us ideas of what we need to do. And right now, I don't, we cannot make a decision right now because, obviously, the last couple of weeks, we found out that we don't know, well, we know that it's not zoned for what we had, what county commissioners had planned on using it for. So we're going to have to work with the city of Salisbury and see what the possibilities are of working with the way it is at this point in time. If they don't change their minds, then we're going to have to see what options are available for us, and then we'll make a decision. Like I said, we can, there's several things we can do with it. The land is valuable, the property itself is older, and we don't know at this point how much the maintenance is on. There's just a lot of things that we're going to need to do before we can decide exactly what we should do with the mall.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mr. Cohen. A reader of The Post writes in, "If you are elected to the commission, will you support the county moving forward with a lawsuit against the city of Salisbury for denying the special-use permit for the West End Plaza, formerly known as the Salisbury Mall? If so, why? If not, what other approach would you think would be appropriate for working with the city?" Mr. Cohen.
Well, I don't think that this is really a lawsuit as such. I think it's maybe a request to go before a Board of Adjustments, or maybe have a judge review this process. I think that the county and city more than likely can work out their differences. I think it's in the best interest of everybody in the county to do so. It's time to lay down our arms and work together. As we continue to talk about this, I want to go more toward the mall purchase. I think that I would like to see my candidates that just spoke on this with the positive outlook that they have here tonight. I have always looked at this building as a goodbye. When I purchase a stock, I like to buy low. I always forget to buy at the lowest price, no. Do I get to sell at the highest price, no. But we bought this at a good price, $10 per square foot. That's a good price, and that includes free parking with it. Renovation costs probably looking anywhere from $40 to $50 a square foot. I'm fortunate enough that I have been able to talk to the architects on this project, Bob Lauer of ADW, who is heading it up, and he said this is a very sound building of steel, concrete block, and brick. I was fortunate enough to maintain the roof on it for the first twenty years. It was well-kept through the early owners. Most of y'all have probably been in it, and it is not a bad facility. We need to make a good use of it. We need to work together and not let this area of Salisbury decline any further. It is surrounded by- It is surrounded by numerous businesses, our two biggest private educational facilities in Sacred Heart and Salisbury Academy. We need to look positive and move forward with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
My answer to your question would be, no, I would not run with the lawsuit idea. I would ask the Board of Commissioners and the City Council to come in the room and leave their egos outside the door, and then we sit down and work out these differences to see how we can enjoy that facility somehow for the benefit of, of the people. You know, the glass has always got some water in it, I think you've heard me say that before. And so, right now, that mall doesn't have a whole lot of water in it, but it does have some, and being confrontational about it doesn't help you solve the problem. So, I think if the people involved, the decision-makers of the community, sit down together and work towards that goal of making a good use out of it somehow, and if you can't find one, then identify different ways that it can be used by the private sector. I will have to agree, I do not believe that government should be in private business. Government should be the facilitator of the environment so that private sector can flourish on that point. So, that's the way I would approach it. I would not be in a real big rush in making those decisions, because your, your decision is only as good as the information that you use to make that decision. So, we have to be thorough in that process, and then let the information guide us in what decision that we should make. Thank you.
Mr. Adams. You know, my first thought when, when I saw this, and I probably agree with Chris, I don't know that technically this is a lawsuit, but my first thought was, really? Is this what we've become? From all sides. Have we reached the point to where adults can't walk in or feel comfortable with walking in with other elected officials and sitting down and talking about, how can we work through our differences and make sure that there are assurances in place? So, weeks ago, when this came up, I publicly had begun to say that I was not in favor of that. So, I don't agree if this was a lawsuit, I don't agree with it going forward. I think this is just an issue of leadership. I think this is what the community is crying out for, it's what they're demanding. In February, I started knocking on doors in Rowan County, and I've knocked on over 950 doors in the county and had that many conversations. And people are asking for leadership. They're tired of this. They want folks who can sit down across the table and discuss calmly what is in the best interest of the community. In my opinion, the city is simply delaying. I, I don't know this. I think they want a group of folks they believe they can work with. I've been told I'm naive. I remember telling someone one time, if there's one thing I'm not naive about, it's that I'm very naive. Because I know that things that I want to accomplish, beginning on December 1st, are gonna be tough, and I know there's gonna, I'm, I'm gonna be eating my words and saying they're tougher than what I think they are. But you know, right now, we've been given two choices by the extremes. One is sell, or demolish, or give away the mall at any choice, and one is develop it at any cost. And I say, those are bogus offers, there are a range of things we can do, and we have smart folks here who can decide that.
Thank you, Mr. Milton.
I absolutely would not go forward with the lawsuit. In my opening remarks, I used two words, cooperation and communication. And whoever the three commissioners are that go forward on December 1st, they need to be able to sit down and cooperate, communicate with any and all municipalities within our jurisdiction. But when they come to the table to discuss the mall and the use of the mall, our commissioners need to have facts. What are, what, what is their plan for the mall? We need to develop a trust level with the city of Salisbury that Salisbury feels comfortable and that we, the county, would not do something that's detrimental to the city. All of this comes about with all this upheaval, and somehow, that's got to be put aside, and people have got to learn to trust one another, to talk to one another, and to just move forward. You know, I was raised with the philosophy of leave something better than when you found it, and as commissioners, I believe that that's a good thing we need to do for our people. Whatever's done with this mall, whatever it is, it needs to be better than when we found it. I don't have all the answers. The answers will come from the people, what they want to be done with the mall. It's your mall, it's not ours, it's yours. So, what do you want to see happen? What will the cost be? What are the true needs of the county? We have two empty buildings now. We needed office space, we had two buildings that those departments could have moved to. So, for us to say that we needed the mall to move departments, in my opinion, that's bogus. So, with that being said, fresh ideas, communication, cooperation, and let's work through this situation.
Our next question, we will start with Mr. Locklear. A reader to The Post writes in the following question. "What would be your approach to the relationship between the commission and other elected bodies within the county, especially the school board and the city of Salisbury?" Mr. Locklear.
First of all, there needs to be a clear understanding by the commissioners. What is your role? Understand that, first of all. Recognize that there are other bodies throughout the county that also have responsibilities for specific things, whether they be county or, or whether it be the school board. I think the veiled question here is, you know, how would you deal with the school board? Now, as county commissioners and as candidates, we've been asked a lot of questions about the education. The thing we need to understand as commissioners, we're limited about our role as far as providing education. We need to understand that we have a limited role in that capacity. We need to support the, the Board of Education and the decisions that they make. We need to try and have a better cooperation with the city, city boards throughout the county. Recently, the issue came up about water in sewer. We need to understand that it must be a coordination throughout the county that we can provide services. I recall when someone was asking, "Well, how do you feel about the county owning and operating a water system?" The first thing that came to my mind was, how expensive would that be? And when you created these water lines leading out to the county, who would want to pay to hook up to them? And where are you leading them to? And when you ran water out there and the water became stagnant, and you opened up the pipes in order to make sure the water wasn't stagnant, what would your citizens say? We need to have cooperation among our boards, the ability to sit down and talk with one another so we can reach solutions. I've been practicing law for the last 30 years. When I look at my practice of law, I see myself as a problem solver. First of all, that means listening to the questions, the problems that exist, and then exploring different solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Milton.
You know, when I was traveling around back in February and March, talking to folks about candidacy and trying to get a petition filled out, there was a couple of major themes that kept coming forward. And keep in mind, folks, that out of the 5,100 signatures that I received, I probably talked about 3,000, 3,300 of them personally. So, I got a good heartbeat, good feel for what was going on in the county, and one of the things they talked to me about is, can you get along with other elected officials? Why is it that as a commission, we have to be in conflict with the Board of Education? Have to be in conflict with the city of Salisbury, the rescue squads, fire departments, whatever? Why do we have to do that? And my patented answer for that is, first thing we've gotta do is put civility back in our county government. We've gotta be professional with each other, and we've got to understand that we're not gonna always agree on everything, but we're just gonna have to agree to sit down and disagree on some things and go to a compromise. Now, we're not going to get a whole lot accomplished in this county if all we do is bicker back and forth and fight over what is right and what is not right. We're gonna have to support each other. I would love to see the county commission, rather than working with the school board, rather than criticizing everything they do, is talk about the good things that are going on. If we don't raise each other up, and if we don't compliment each other, and we don't just go out of the way to make each other feel good, then everybody around us, the people coming from outside of our county, and the people that live in, live in our county, are gonna say, "Why can't we get along? What is the problem? I don't know why we can't do that." But it's just a simple matter of sitting down and agreeing with each other, and as I said, putting civility back in, back in, in the, in the process, and I promise you, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
You know, the, the relationship between the county commissioners and the school board has, has been contentious for a good while. My job, like some others here on the board, for the last 37 years, has been building relationships. And as my wife tells me often, that to build a relationship, you have to listen to me. So, that is one of the ways that we can, can help to rebuild this relationship with any of our people that provide services for our county residents. We have to go, we have to know what they're doing, we have to know how we can help as commissioners, but our jobs are defined. I, as a county commissioner, my job would not be to run the Board of Education and to set policy for the schools. I understand that. The jobs of running schools are set by the Board of Education. Our job, as defined by the state, is to provide money and facilities to the school in certain amounts to make sure that they do the jobs the very best that we can. Other facility, other folks that provide services, the municipalities especially, I've been around and talked to a lot of municipalities, and they, they just want us to listen to them. They want us to know what problems they're having and how we can help them. It's, it's just like relationships with your kids. There's no, there's no substitute for time in being with that person and understanding their problem. Thank you, Mr. Milton.
I, too, have heard over and over again, "Why can't we get along?" And one of the things that I learned as a state legislator, as a pastor, is that we need to listen. We need to build a relationship with others, and that only happens by breaking bread together. Now, I know that the new commission, if three of us get together, then, you know, we have to invite Elizabeth from The Post. So, people are wanting us to get together, and that means the city councils, the town boards, the volunteer fire department. I mean, all across our county, there are partners out there that haven't been heard or haven't been listened to. So, I think as we go forward, I'm looking forward to, and I think I bring skills to the table as far as, like I said, listening. I have worked with entities at all levels of government, and that's whether it's the school board, or the hospital, or town boards. I've worked with the state DOT, and even going to Washington to make sure we have an airport extension. I believe that we can be civil and to communicate and cooperate and collaborate, because that's what the people of our county are asking of us. That's how we do things together better.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mr. Coltrane. A reader of the Salisbury Post wrote in, "Do you agree or disagree with the notion that low-performing schools are the primary reason Rowan County has a difficult time attracting more and better jobs? If not, what do you believe will bring jobs to the county?" Mr. Coltrane.
Thank you. Yes, it is definitely a part of that. Do I think it is the sole reason? Absolutely not. I think the primary reason we're having difficulty attracting businesses and industry is our overall negative image that is out there in that human grapevine. I had the opportunity of serving on the EDC back in the 90s, and it's amazing how many inquiries that we received about people having an interest in coming to a county that is in a blessed geographic location, right smack down in the middle of about two-thirds of the population of this country. So, no, overall, it's our attitude, and if we can work together and develop that attitude in a positive way, with respect, and look after our, look after our own business as far as working with other boards, as far as the municipality and the Board of Education, we each have our own assigned roles that are assigned by the citizens of the county, and we should take care of our own backyard before we try to manage or supervise others. So, in response to your question as far as attracting, we have to begin to change our attitude and show the people, the human grapevine out there, that we can get along and that we are all willing to work with them. We're not gonna give them the bank, we have expectations of them, but if they're coming and working with us, then they have to be assured that we will help them do whatever we can to come and contribute to our community, which will be of benefit to our citizens, not only in jobs and goods and services, but the quality of life. We have one of the premier attractions in this area been Dead Nicklaus Park. Went to Fall, Fall Festival a couple of weekends ago, and probably over 30,000 people visited that. That's a lot of human grapevine folks, if they go home and talk. So, if we can build cooperation and an attitude of positiveness in our county, people will come and ask us to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds.
That's a great question. You know, another, another thing, I'll, I'll get to that, another thing I hear is, well, if we can just get better commissioners, everything will be all right, and I just, I don't agree with that. We're gonna have three new commissioners, and there, there's the changes in the air, and things are gonna get better. The schools are gonna be the number one issue, that folks, we, we know this. We know that when CEOs are looking at a community and remove their workers, their managers, their plants there, consider moving their kids here to our schools, and we have issues that we need to work through, and certainly, we wanna partner with the schools and bring a new day to our local education. But, but that's not it. There are a lot of things. It's not just cantankerous leadership, it's not that we can't seem to get along, it's not just the schools. There are 50, 100 things that we, as a community, have to get better. It's the whole package, and that's why we have to focus on really building a plan. The number one thing folks are looking for is a trained workforce, and we've gotta begin to partner better with the schools in our recruiting efforts. This is one thing I hope we're gonna be talking about schools a lot more tonight. That's one thing I've been working toward, is trying to, to focus on those jobs that we can recruit here, and then marry our efforts between our recruiting folks and our education folks, so we can have a workforce that's the envy of our region. The quality of life is another thing that, listen, we are blessed with where we are, and Salisbury's got too many things for me to mention here in 28 seconds left. We know that we have a great benefit here in Rowan County due to our geographic location, but quality of life is not something that we can just call as cute anymore. We have to begin to treat it as an economic development tool. People who are moving into jobs that we wanna recruit can live anywhere they want, and they, they are looking for quality of life, and we have to begin to pay attention to that as an economic development tool.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Low-performing schools, lack of jobs being attracted, no. I'm retired, but I'm still in the school system every day as a substitute teacher, and I'm gonna tell you hats off to what our school board and our school leadership's doing. They're turning the schools around. You read in the paper, Salisbury High School is at or above national average on testing? That's commendable, and the other schools are gonna perform just as well. Why are we not bringing jobs into this community? Negative opinion, lack of relationship, trained workforce. Our commissioners ought to be working with our community. Our commissioners ought to be working with our community college each and every day to ensure that our community colleges have what they need to train the worker. There should not be a waiting list for any citizen who's been laid off from a job or who wants to go out and be retrained to have to wait to get that training. And that's happening. That's happening. Our community college has worked wonders with what they've been given. But we don't have that open-door policy of communication between the commissioners and our education people to ensure that the training is taking place. So, negative opinion, lack of relationship, trained workforce, schools that are turning around and that are turning out good students, and students that will test well, those are the things that will attract better jobs. I have a home on the market right now. It was shown last week to a couple from Seattle, Washington. They're going to work in Mecklenburg County, but they specifically asked to live in Rowan. We're doing something right when that person who's working in Mecklenburg wants to skip Cabarrus to come to us, and that's quality of life. We have it, and it is an economic tool. It's a tool that we need to develop, we need to embrace, and we need to thank God that he gave it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bell.
We serve some good views here. It's not all about education. It's not all about anything. There is too many things we need to improve on in Rowan County. Yes, new leadership. But I've been trying to sell my business for the last year. I'm having a hard time getting rid of it. I've had people look at my business from Florida, West Virginia, New Jersey, and now on the coast of North Carolina. They don't see things positive here. They want to see a community that works together to solve the problems, and we have many problems to solve. One of those main problems may be what we just heard the candidates on the other side of the table, the stability between all the boards. It's right, the county commissioners are charged to support the school system financially with all their needs, not just the educational side, but the facility side. And as you see right now, we've had almost four years of constant bickering over a central school office building. We need a new central school office building, but we need to work together and locate it in the right place that can do justice for this whole community, not just the county seat. One of the main things I see as a drawback is lack of infrastructure investment, and that comes from not just the county, but the city. Has the city gave us any parking? Has the county invested in our interstate corridor, which is now four lanes from, almost from South Charlotte to Raleigh? People don't see Salisbury like they used to. It is a community that has lacked to develop its infrastructure and invest in its community. So if we won't, as a community, will not invest in our own infrastructure, why should a business come here? Look at Freightliner. They just published where they could not even get jobs from people from Rowan County.
Thank you. We'll now move to our concluding remarks, and a reader of the Post asks specifically, and we will start with Mr. Miller, "In your concluding comments, please address the following. When you enter Rowan County, you are greeted by a sign that states, quote, 'A county committed to excellence,' unquote. Address how you, if elected to the Rowan County Board of Commissioners, would be committed to the ensuring excellence in this county." Mr. Miller.
Thank you. At the present time, I would submit to you that the sign is a joke. That actually is a hard question. Like you, I've found those signs to be very embarrassing lately. But being truly committed to excellence takes more than commitments that our leaders have shown. It remains to be seen whether this election will change the attitude enough to keep the signs the way they are. I hope that Rowan's citizens feel the same way that I do. If so, the sign's message and motto could become appropriate again. I hope so. First, while I do not have control over other commissioners, I do have control over myself. I will act and behave as a commissioner. I have more than twenty-eight years of practice in, in attending Board of Education meetings, and I assure you, that takes cooperative, cooperation, and it takes working with each other to see that you can get along and that you can do the things that you need to, to move forward. I will choose to act in a professional and courteous way for all, representing Rowan in a way that reflects well on our county. Secondly, I would like to see Rowan restored to its former status as an attractive place to live, work, and raise children, and I'm certain that we have the tools to do that. We were there once, folks, and it hasn't been too long ago. Where we went wrong, I'm not sure, but there has definitely been a change. This will be my focus for four years as a commissioner, if I'm so fortunate enough to be elected. It will take the voters electing three good, good commissioners, or the board will not change. Three new, modern commissioners could very quickly change and improve the attitudes and business environment for Rowan County and make the signs once again relevant. And I hope that everybody will understand that that is the way we have to go. We cannot continue on the path that we are. You've heard that we're the only county between South Carolina and Wake County on the I-5 corridor that's not growing, and there's a reason for that, and there's a reason that we need to change things, and I think we can make that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Law.
Commitment to excellence. If I were to ask you, what would I need to do to become the best county commissioner I would possibly, I could possibly be? I'm certain what you would tell me is start with a good education, and if you can get some specialized training, that's going to help. But if you be a part of this board, understand that you're going to have to work together with others, so people's skills are important. But not only will you be working with this board, you're going to be working with boards on, for other towns, municipalities, the school board, as well as other regional boards. If you look at my resume, what you'll find is that I've committed myself to preparing myself to be the best commissioner I can be. I've always had a strong passion for local government. After graduating from Catawba College, I went to UNC Chapel Hill, and at the time when I received my masters, it was in the top five in the country. Later on, when I went to Wake Forest, recognizing I had a masters in public administration, I took every municipal course I possibly could, zoning, planning, and environmental law. I prepared myself as best I can. In the last eight years, I've served as a Landis Town Attorney. We went inlandish from being in trouble, the landises now sound very financially, and I can't take credit for that. We've had two or three different boards, but the one thing those board members have been able to do is work together. Folks, what I can promise you, and I understand credentials standing alone will not guarantee that someone's going to be a good county commissioner, but Rowan County is my home. I've lived here primarily since nineteen seventy-four, and I never thought I would say that anywhere else would be my home, but that's the way I feel about Rowan County now. I'm passionate about it, and I want to make it a better place.
Disclusion.
A county of excellence. I don't think we're there right now, but I think we can get there. We have a tremendous amount of resources here in this county. We've got water, rail, and a big city. Those things are really, really important because they're part of the foundation of growing our county back into excellence. Now, to have a vision for where we can go, I think is critical. But it's not just one person's vision. I think that we need, and several of the candidates talked about, how we need to reach out to other boards, to our school system. I love Rowan, yes. I'm a homeowner, and I hope to retire in that little house I have. But I think it's important for us to have experienced leadership. And that is what I bring to this election. You know, spending twelve years in the state legislature and almost forty years of my life on my family dairy farm, you get a lot of experience in so many things. And I tell people, well, I've worked with government, I know how to do that, but the most important thing is that I have the common sense I learned on the farm. And those are the things that I will bring to the table, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you.
This morning early, I was at a meeting, which Secretary Decker was there, and she talked about the things that we needed in a community to bring in jobs. And she started naming five of them. I'm going to remember four and make up one. First one they talked about was a good EDC program. We have that. They talked about a good health program. And we've gone through this, the change of our local hospital to Novant taking over, and it was tough for some of us to accept change, but we've decided, we now see that we have one of the premier hospitals in our community, and we're, we're happy to have it. The arts, Rowan County, Salisbury has Piedmont players, they have an orchestra. What other city our size has something like that? And then we talked about the resources in our area. We have community colleges. We're just blessed with two liberal arts colleges. We have Rowan-Cabarrus Community College, a jewel for all of the public to get to. And then we, we even have a seminary here in our community. So we're not far away from that. Yes, we are having problems now, but if we start growing, we start bringing jobs in here, we start getting our kids jobs so they can stay here and they don't have to move to Raleigh or move to Charlotte, these metropolis's, we can, you can see us come back in the glory days of what some of our candidates keep referring to back when we were, we were really a jewel in the Piedmont area. And we can do it again.
Ms. Redd.
You know, the quest for excellence is, is honestly why I decided to run. I, I knew that folks would ask me, "So what's your plan?" So out of an intense desire not to look really stupid, I began to study and draft a plan that I really felt could put the county back on its feet economically. In the past twelve months, I've spent over a thousand hours developing books on economic development, and the topic of how are some communities able to turn themselves around, yet other communities continue to struggle? And that's really the basic question we need to answer. I've traveled around the region to talk to advisors, economic developers, and others who had offered advice on how to create a detailed plan for positive growth. Just recently, I've spent three hours with a local economic development professional and asked her, "Who is the best recruiting county in the region, and what are they doing that we are not doing?" I walked away with literally pages of recommendations. And may I ask, why aren't we harvesting the advice of our local CEOs about how to turn our economy around? I said that after the elections, I would bring a group together to talk about that and ask for their help, but soon realized after elections are too late. So July one, I brought a group of CEOs together, and we're now working on recommendations that we can put into place immediately. I often hear the statement, "If we can just get new commissioners, things will be better," but I just, I disagree with that. I look up and down this table, and I can promise you that we will all get along. I can tell you that we'll all represent you well and that we won't embarrass you. We'll be respectful. I promise you that we'll get along better with the city and with the school system. But if we don't elect folks with a vision for greatness, someone with a bold plan and courage and conviction to lead, then in four years, while we all might get along, we may be sitting in the same predicament. So this is important to all of us. In Rowan County, I would just say, choose wisely.
Thank you. Mr. Coltrane.
Thank you. Before I say that you work towards anything, just having, and you've already said many times before, positive attitude. The most long-term public servant we've had at this state had on his desk ninety percent attitude, ten percent ability. So we need to have that attitude, and the board of commissioners need to be the facilitators of the creation of that attitude and be of support for all of the other agencies, town boards, school board, whatever there is, to help those people identify and help them accomplish their goals. Because when the pieces of the puzzle work together, then the puzzle gets completed. So if we can do that by working and coordinating together for our county, then we will be regarded as, at least working towards that goal. Will we ever reach it? No. We're still on earth, and we'll always be here. But we can certainly make strides towards that goal if we have the attitude that we want to first of all, and then we are willing to work together towards that goal. There again, coming into the room, leaving our egos outside the door, and making the decisions that are necessary based on the information, not our emotions, we can make progress on this thing. It's been done before. If you go back until in the late seventies and the early eighties, before I was transferred here in Rowan County by the Department of Defense, you had a board of commissioners then, the politics was not an issue at all. Personal ego was not an issue at all. And things happened during that period of time. And so that tells us that we, it can be done. All we have to do is want to do it, and the leaders of that are going to be the board of commissioners, not to do it themselves, but to help other people accomplish those goals. When you're the CEO of a company, you set the environment upon which staff goes to work, and if you can get out of their way, they'll do the work. But if the board can work together, we can accomplish it.
Thank you. Mr. Coltrane.
Committed to excellence. I think I spoke a lot on that in the last question, but I really want to relate to the infrastructure. We have not developed our county in a way to attract new businesses and new residential homeowners to this area. Look at our surrounding counties, how they develop their interstate corridors. That enabled them to have money to develop their whole county and improve their school systems. Right now, Ardell County has a hundred and thirty-five million dollar school bond on their ballot for November. Cabarrus County has one of almost a hundred million. We chose to sue our county commissioners over a measly forty million. Yes, we need to improve our schools. We need to improve our level of education, but we need to improve our infrastructure to give us the means to do that. We need service roads down each side of our interstate so new businesses can locate here. We need to be prepared for those business with less restrictive zoning and help through the permitting process so they can quickly establish any venture they want. Possibly, we can look at an educational complex at Rowan-Cabarrus. Maybe that's the best site for a CSO to develop that interstate. If we would invest money there, I'm sure the Hutton Group would find the final anchor they need for their complex on Julian Road. We need an event center that we can graduate our high school students in so that our RCC students don't have to go to the south campus Cabarrus County Event Center to graduate. I'm sure a lot of y'all have worked with travel teams and taken your kids or followed your grand trip to all the other surrounding communities. We need to develop a youth program with softball fields and baseball fields so we can attract people to occupy our motels and our restaurants here in Rowan County. Score victory for Rowan County, vote Chris Cohen, county commissioner.
Thank you. Ms. Bell.
Thank you. You know, we are committed to excellence in so many ways, but the negative image that we put out there kind of casts a dark blue cloud over. When you look at our EDC, they're second to none. They're great. They do great things, and they're trying. When you look at our colleges, Catawba, Livingston, RCCC, each and every one's committed to excellence in turning out fine graduates. Look at our arts. You've got the normal theater for the children. What other community our size has that? You've got Piedmont players, you've got the Black Box, you've got so much going on in this community in the arts. You've got the Water Works. We just had our home pool for the historic. We are about excellence in this community, but we have allowed the negative press and the negative ism between our boards to cast really dark shadows. It's got to stop. We need commissioners who will carry themselves with dignity and who will represent youth and people of this community. When I was privileged to be your community, your- When I was privileged to be your community, your commissioner from 2000, 2004, we as an elected body did just that. There were five of us. I was a lone Democrat. You know what? We agreed to disagree on a lot of things, and we moved things forward for this community. And we were growing. We were about doing things. We had 17 active projects at one time. And we, and this community was moving forward, and in 2005, 2006, the breaks hit this community, and it's been breaks ever since. It's time for that to stop. It's time for commissioners to be elected who have the dignity to represent the people, and I mean all the people, leave their egos outside and go in and do the job they're elected to do. We are a community of excellence. We just need to show it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in thanking our candidates here.